Well, it is 7 o'clock. This is the November regular meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education. The district's mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Dr. Olson, can you verify the meeting notice?
Yes, it was posted on the LSD website and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
The boarder. And if you could all stand and join me, there is a flag at the rear of the board table. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Larrabee, could we have a roll call vote, please? A roll call, not a vote, sorry.
Don Delaney?
I'm sorry, here.
Amy Litter?
Here.
Andrew Palmer?
Here.
David Radel?
Here.
Robert Tempurio?
Here.
We need to approve the agenda. This would be an opportunity at this point, should there be any items on the consent agenda that a board member would wish to discuss separately. If you could identify those now. Hearing none, I would then accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
I believe the board approved the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Motion's been approved, been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The agenda is approved. The next item of business are board reports. The first one is an update on the facilities committee. We met since the last regular board meeting, including Mr. Radel and myself, as well as Dr. Olson and Ms. Brocker, our facilities director, our maintenance director, and our recreation director. And several things were discussed. One, there were some available funds from the referendum. It was recommended by the committee that those dollars be used to provide pavement, asphalt pavement adjacent to the old soccer field and around the former vocational building, which would utilize all of those funds. The second thing we did was to look at a long-range plan. That long-range plan will be, was discussed. We talked about it briefly in the finance committee meeting tonight, and that will be coming back to the full board for approval at a later date. The third item that the committee talked about was a possible arrangement with the city of Lake Mills that relates to the Rock Lake Activity Center. And there is more work to be done on that, including more detail from the city. The city has formed an ad hoc committee to look at the potential purchase of that building, and we will be continuing to work with them and determine exactly what the school district's role is going to be. So the next, the next report would be from Dr. Delaney. We have some policies for the first reading.
The policy committee, which consists of myself, Amy, and Tanya, we met November 3rd to review three policies, so it was a little shorter than our last one. Policy 84550.01, personal protective equipment during pandemic and epidemic events, provides some clarification on the use of humanity shields as face coverings. And also if face coverings are required for those without exceptions. This requirement would fall under dress code policy. We also looked at policy 7544, which clarifies the use of social media, providing some guidance on acceptable social media use. And policy 5200, which is the student attendance policy, which has been modified for virtual learning.
So are there any questions at this time? This will be the first reading of these policies. They'll be coming back at our December meeting then for full board action. But hearing none, we'll move on to our student board members' report. Ms. Mendoza, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, it is your turn to give your report.
All right. So, I mean, based on when we just kind of went virtually and kind of like how the first quarter went, I believe that, I don't know, first quarter was kind of like a learning point for all students, I believe, kind of to see what works for them, what worked for them, both virtually and in person. So I do believe that the second quarter is gonna go by a lot smoothly. I think people are in more of a routine and kind of have like a better idea of their classes, and I think people are a lot more prepared for this upcoming quarter. And as for sports, I think for those who did play in fall sports, I think, you know, they were very benefited being able to play as well, like they really appreciated it, especially the seniors, this being their last year. I think that was really beneficial for them, kind of just to have some closure with their senior year and, you know, with the sport that they've most likely been playing for these four years. So I think that first quarter, like I said, was a great learning point, and I think a lot of the students are a lot more comfortable with all the material and like the facilities and as well as the building.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, again, thank you. We will move on to the administrative reports. The first, Mr. Considine, our high school assistant principal and director of athletics.
Yeah, so we're just wrapping up our fall season. Just, I gave you the presentation, but I thought there was a few interesting things that you might like to know. We had an increase of about 10%. We went from 166 student athletes last year to 180 this year. There is some fear with COVID and stuff that, that we might see a drop, but we actually saw an increase, so that was really positive to see. At the end of every season, I send out surveys to both parents and players. Haven't sent out footballs yet because they're still in playoffs and they're still going on, but it was really great to see some of the responses that we got. For the parent survey, we asked them, I'm glad that my student participated in sport this fall. And 98% of the surveys back said yes, which is really, really high. You never see that type of number. And for the student athletes part, 65 of the 67 students who took it said that they strongly agreed with the statement, being part of this team and program was rewarding and satisfying. So we saw, you know, parents and student athletes have always reached out to me to thank me. I really didn't do much, but I can't tell you how much the, they appreciate what the board did letting them play this fall. We, we were able to get through, we were one of the few schools around that was able to get through everything, knock on wood, we still have two football games to get through. But even as far as you look at, most of our programs have three levels, if not two levels, and there was no pausing for any of those teams. That's, shows a lot of discipline by families and student athletes, but it does take a little luck, too, but we are one of the few high schools in the state that did that. When we switched to this two-week virtual, we were able to seamlessly move through athletics so well that I had other athletic directors call and say, you know, what did you do? Why are you allowing them to keep going? And kind of answering those type of questions. And then we had a lot of success. Our soccer team went to the sectional final for the second straight year and lost to the team that was the state champion again. Our cross-country went to state for the fourth straight year for the girls. Tennis finished second in conference. Our volleyball team, I had a good year, they probably had the toughest schedule in the state, according to max preps. And our football team is, only two losses are to undefeated teams, and hopefully if things align, we'll get lakeside in two weeks. I'm kind of looking forward to the winner update. All three sports are gearing up. They did get extra contact days, but one of the things that we asked was that, that they did not hold those contact days for athletes in other sports. So if Steve Hicklin wanted to do a contact day for basketball, we asked that no football players were there. Same thing with wrestling, just to kind of respect our groupings, you could say, or cohorts of athletics. Our schedules are coming into focus a lot better. We're still waiting. Tonight, we'll find out if some capital teams are moving forward. LPS is one of the schools that they're having a break, so they're out of our conference. We still will most likely schedule a non-conference game with them. And I guess the big issue that we're seeing around the state has to do with the mask mandate. It's believed that the WIAA is going to get a mask mandate for wrestlers and basketball players that are on the court competing. So that means, you know, 10 basketball players in a gym would be able to have a mask, not have a mask, and everybody else would have a mask. And then as soon as they came off the court, they would immediately put their mask on. That would be if the state mandate expires, or does not expire. So we're still waiting on the WIAA with that. The Capital Conference voted that everybody will wear masks until January 15th, so that's one round of playing each other, but that's only for conference games, so we'll wait and see for our non-conference stuff. So again, thank you, I can't thank you enough for the board for letting these students do this year. It was great that we were successful, but just for them to get together and compete was something that I know they're very appreciative of.
Questions for Mr. Considine? Comments? Well, thank you very much for a job well done. Next, Mr. Grendal, middle school assistant principal and summer school director.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Good. So it's crazy to think that it's November, we're starting to look at summer school and start planning that far ahead, but usually we get our dates down on the calendar so that people can kind of plan around those. And then we get ready, set to plan with what offerings we're gonna give to students as we go through. This is definitely gonna be a unique year going into summer school. Last year, we definitely had, by COVID effect, we were all virtual for summer school. We are planning to be back in person for summer school this coming up summer. I think we have a lot of protocols already in place, ready to go for our students as they come into it. We're also looking at, obviously, giving some remedial classes, some credit recovery classes for the summer, along with offering our summer school swim again in Rock Lake, if all things hold as, as planned. But obviously, we will be able to pivot and switch lanes if we need to as we go through the planning stages here and for the summer school. So just those dates, we're looking at our first session starting June 14th and running through June 29th. And our second session, July 5th through the 20th for our summer school, that's 8:00 AM to noon, summer school classes. And then we're also looking at offering swim lessons in that second session from July 5th to the 20th. And we're just in the planning stage, just starting going to get those dates going. So we're looking for approval for that today, and then we get started planning on those next stages of teachers and classes and offerings.
Well, thank you. Questions for Mr. Grendal?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for all your hard work. Ms. Thompson, elementary school principal and director of curriculum.
Hi. Tonight, I wanted to share with you our school improvement plan. This year, we're going to continue our focus on literacy and math, instructional practices and job embedded professional development. We look at our iReady test scores as one marker for our professional, for our goal setting. And this year, when we looked at our iReady data, we had two of the consultants from iReady join us to look over where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. And one of the things that they pointed out to us was that a lot of districts saw a slide from last spring to the fall, which is pretty typical, but they said that some districts saw a bigger slide because of COVID and virtual learning and the things that happened in the spring. But they said for Lake Mills, our slide was not as significant as other school districts. And they said that's probably a testament to our virtual learning platform and the work of our teachers. So I just wanted to make sure I highlight that as we move into our school improvement plans. In the area of reading, we are looking at early literacy foundational skills. The new state, the DPI, has released new standards for ELA, and one of the things that it's focusing on is that early reading foundational skills, which our teachers have been trained in year after year after year, but we're putting another emphasis on that this year with Jenny Nichols leading our teachers in our in-service and planning days. The other thing that we're looking at is our intervention structure. Because of COVID and the cohort model, we are readjusting how we're providing interventions, but I am really curious to see, this might be a model that we'll want to carry forward into the future. So we have Mrs. Mullen, one of our reading teachers, specifically at first grade, which is a really critical year for literacy and reading development. So she's providing all the interventions at that grade level, and Mrs. Cook, our other reading teacher, is working with second, third, and fourth grade students. And then Mrs. Nichols is providing our professional development. In the area of math, this is an area that we've implemented, we implemented Ready Math about three years ago, so we're continuing to refine and kind of reformat the way that we deliver our math instruction. And this year, we want to continue that high-level professional development in the area of math to ensure that their teachers have the skills that they need to be able to push our students, bring them as far as they can go in, in math development. So we're working, as I said, with the consultants from iReady to be able to provide another tier and another level of math. Also, digital tools is another thing to be looking at. Ready Math has a new kind of branch of their development called Ready Classroom, so we want to dig into that a little bit and see what offerings Ready Classroom may have that would benefit our teachers and our students. Any questions?
Well, again, we, our thanks for a job well done here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Ms. Bowler, middle school principal.
So we also have a couple of goals this year. Our first goal is around reading. We feel we've been doing a great job with math, and it continues to hold steady with our scores, but over the last few years, our ELA team and our social studies team have started to look into ways to improve our comprehension of informational text. Middle school is a time where reading for content becomes very important, and we want to make sure that we're shoring that up with kids and being very intentional about it. We have, you know, we do read in all of our classes, but being very intentional about the strategies that we're using to make sure that our students are going into high school really ready to deal with academic material, especially reading academic material. So we will be working on that goal. We are going to be emphasizing it in weekly lesson plans. We have also incorporated PLCs into our regular weekly interactions with one another, so we'll be addressing reading in the PLCs. I will be doing little mini professional developments. I just did one last week with our staff. And then we have a big professional development in the winter, in February, with an author coming in to talk to us about how to implement some of those strategies. So our second goal, and it has been for a couple of years, is around SEL, Social Emotional Learning for Students. As you know, we incorporated Playworks last year and saw a huge growth with our, our kids' ability to deal with conflict and create, you know, make sure everyone feels involved in different things on the playground. We've moved that work into the classrooms for this year. And so Playworks is doing classroom, classroom play with socially emotional learning attached, conflict resolution, and all those kinds of things. We also have mindfulness coach coming into every classroom for 10 weeks to work on mindfulness and emotional regulation strategies with students. And then finally, we have Abby Carncross, our new school counselor, will be working, targeting specific students who have had difficulty with the emotional regulation piece of our training and targeting specifically to help improve some of that. So by the end of the year, we hope that most of our kids will be regularly using these strategies, or will at least have something in their toolbox to, to pull out when, when they're under stress or those types of things. I'm also hoping, as a side note, that our teachers are getting some of this information as well and using it. I think play is important for children, but it's also important for adults, you know, during these times, as, as is the other socially emotional learning pieces that we're doing in the classroom. So those are our two goals for this year. Any questions for me?
Okay, well, thank you for the report, and thank you for all your hard work this Next, we'll have a report from Mr. Vogel, the high school principal.
Hello, can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Is that not an echo? Okay, good. Couple of things I have for you. I've been working on this for a little over a year, and the first goal that we have for this school year is the, our teachers reorganizing their summative assessments to make sure that each question or task on that summative assessment is aligned to a specific target. And that's something that we've come across in the last couple of years, we kind of changed up some of our grading practices as far as when we have a reassessment, like a kind of a redo on some type of summative assessment or project, where some of our assessments, the questions were kind of, were jumbled, they weren't kind of, so when a kid, when a student needed to, or had the ability to retake the test, they're really the focus on, well, what standard or learning target was that student still deficient in? So going through that relearning process, and then if, if we have our, our task or questions aligned to a specific standard or target on that assessment, teachers, it just makes the reassessment process a lot easier for teachers when you go back and say, okay, student A is really, they're not hitting this specific target based upon these questions on this assessment. So our teachers are working really hard. We probably would've got it done last spring, but due to COVID and everything, you know, going virtual last spring, we weren't kind of able to kind of put an end on making sure that all of our assessments, our summative assessments or, or projects had, had this. So really, it brings clarity, it brings improved consistency to student feedback, and it does help our reassessment process going forward. Another goal we have, a social emotional learning goal, and that is by the end of this year, we're gonna create a ninth-grade school climate survey, which we'll use throughout next year, and then hopefully eventually build that through a climate survey that we can utilize nine through 12. But we're gonna focus on ninth grade next year, really focusing on that transition process from middle school to our building and how our next year's incoming freshman class, you know, feels about that and, and the culture of, of that transition. We think it's pretty good, but we'd like to, we'd like to have some data behind that and, and see what that process entails. You know, we thought about doing something like that this year, but with the current situation, we don't know, we don't, we don't think we'd get a really good baseline, because we do have some students that have, some freshman students that have not been in this building yet. So it makes sense that we would get our committee together and start that process next year, get that survey ready, have the committee, and then eventually make that a 9-12 survey down the road. So that's our two goals we're working on. We all, we, in addition, we are working on the same things as, as far as middle school, as far as the literacy and the content area. It's one of our focuses that we talk about on a monthly and weekly basis here at the high school, and we're gonna share in that professional development in February, I believe, with a literacy and the content expert coming in and talking to both the middle school and high school staff. And really, for, for us, it's, it's reading and writing in the content area, and at the high school level, that informational text and that vocabulary, which we think our students are lacking a little bit, and really, it's coming down to what kind of instructional strategies can we give our teachers to help make that, that, that content more understandable for our students in, you know, reading, writing, discussion as, as they, as they get through high school, and definitely help them in college and career readiness when they leave here. Another thing I just wanted to talk about that, do I talk about the safety plan right now, Tanya? Want me to talk about that? We have the safety plan, updated safety plan for you guys for this school year. There was just a couple of changes as far as that safety plan, but that really relates to the contacts at a glance, and then throughout some of the buildings, as far as who is responsible for attendance in certain situations, whether it's evacuation, shelter, or and/or. We have shelter. Or evacuation, sorry, like a fire drill. So, I mean, some of those changes were really staff's names throughout each of the three buildings. As far as that, the document has pretty much stayed the same, and that is implemented at all three buildings. As far as some of the training on this is, for each of our buildings, that's kind of on hold because of COVID, but we do plan to get back on track as far as some of our lockdown evacuation training, hopefully next, starting next fall.
Amy, is it open to ask questions now?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you go ahead.
Did this safety plan get updated or changed after the, the big evacuation incident from pre-COVID, when I think that was sometime like in the wintertime? Were there any updates to that, from that issue, from that, I guess, event?
Not specifically. I mean, there's, there was lots and lots of discussion after that, that bomb threat And it really, you know, one of the, the major things that we talked about is just the lines of communication between the district office slash police to each of the three buildings and how that works. So we're still, we're gonna work on that. I mean, that was definitely a need to our situation last spring. Otherwise, again, our staffs and administration did a fantastic job. But yeah, we, we talked about that quite a bit, and that, that's been updated. This has all been updated well after that.
So any other questions? Well, great. Thank you very much for your hard work during these difficult times, Mr. Vogel.
Thank all you. I appreciate it.
Next, Ms. Brocker, director of business service, for your report.
Thank you. For my report, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Brian Anderson. He is with the audit firm, Whitley, and he is here to present the audit report for us from this past year.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Wendy. Once again, Brian Anderson from Whitley in Madison, and glad to join you here. And this is our first year as auditors, so it was nice to meet everybody there and work with everyone, so just wanted to give you a quick review of the audit. I'm gonna go pretty fast, but I'm just gonna hit on some highlights, so if I miss something or you have any questions, feel free to stop me. If you have the audit in front of you, I just start on page one there always, just to point out that we are required to give an opinion on the financial statements. They're the responsibility of management for preparing them, even though we do assist in putting them in the format, they're, they're still the information from Wendy and her team, and we're just required to give an opinion based on the procedures that we do. So they're on page two. Our opinion is a clean opinion, so based on our, our testing, everything is fairly presented in all material respects, so that's a good thing. Let's see, the financials start there on page four. The first set of financial statements includes capital assets, debt, and pension liabilities. So it is more of a, for your information only, most of the decisions that you make are on the fund financials, which start on page six. But just out of curiosity, on page five there, you do have an increase in your net position for the year. That's mainly due to spend, increase in your capital assets, which are not expensed for these financial purposes. Say that the financials there, on the fund basis, they're on page six. You have the general funds and other major funds, which are debt service and capital projects funds. The change in the fund balance there is on page eight. We always point that out, the general fund, pretty much break even for the year, slight increase in fund balance of $250,000, so that's a good thing. that's a good thing. You have ending fund balance of about $4.7 million compared to total expenses of 19. So you got three months expense and reserve. That's probably a minimum of what we like to see, but at least you have something there. Obviously, you spent down the capital projects funds during the year, so that added decrease of 7.7 million. Yeah, the other funds were pretty much break even. So no major concerns there from our perspective. It's information there to look at going forward. Let's see, the notes to the financials, nothing significant to point out there, just more for you to read and get more information on the numbers in the financial statements. The debt is always something that's, if you're curious about, that starts on page 21. Page 22 has what the debt maturity will be. It's an information on the WRS pension plan. Your district's pension plan is in there as well, and all their other post-employment benefit plan. There's a lot of information in there. Some of it you may not really need, but it's there for you to review if you're curious. Page 37 will have the budget to actual results. You can always look and see what your results were compared to budget. Looking at the far right column, everything was pretty much in line with what you budgeted. Revenues were $66,000 over, and expenses were $520,000 under. So obviously, that's a good thing. You had the increase in fund balance. You projected a $400,000 deficit, and you ended up with a $250,000 positive balance. That's a good thing. Yeah, rest of the financials. At the end, we have two separate opinions, because you have federal awards, you're required, are required to give an opinion on your financial reporting and compliance with your awards. And as far as internal control goes, we do have two findings, which they were findings in the, in the prior year as well, related to segregation of duties and financial statement preparation. We feel like they were material weaknesses in the past, which means there was a chance that something material could be missed and not caught. I feel like with the people that you have there and the controls that you have, those are down to significant deficiencies. I don't think anything material could be missed. But just because of the small staff that you have, I don't think you can quite get an optimum segregation of duties unless you do add a lot more procedures, get more involvement of the board, more involvement of the superintendent. So if you're interested in that, we can look at maybe some slight recommendations to improve things. But for the most part, I think you separate duties as well as you can. It's just the ability to do something is there. I mean, Wendy has a lot of authority, just because things need to get done. If people are on vacation, she's shaking her head yes, so she agrees. Yeah, I mean, I'd say to a district your size, 99% are going to have this finding, so I don't feel like it's a main concern. But we could do some procedures here and there if you're interested. And then with the financial statement prep, there was no audit entries. So I feel like you're doing what you need to do with the general ledger. It's just those put notes in the back that are kind of complicated. And I mean, if Wendy's interested in going to hours and hours of training, we can get rid of that. But I'm guessing her time is better spent doing other things. So I don't feel like either one of those, or either one of the findings are that big a deal for a district your size. Page 49, compliance. There's no compliance issues, we noted. So that's a good thing. And then specific to your federal and state awards on pages 15, 51, we feel like you have, we had, based on our testing, you had proper compliance with those grants, and then you had proper internal control to make sure those grants were properly spent. So no findings there. Schedule of your federal awards and state awards is in the back as well, in case you're curious. And then the findings that I just described there on page 58, in case you're curious or reading what those are, but I gave highlights of what those were. So that's the financial statements. And then quick on the separate required communication letter, just kind of a summary of the audit, how it went. As we mentioned before, management's responsible for the financials. We give an opinion on the financials. There was a new accounting pronouncement in place in the current year, and that was moving some of the district student activity funds over to the special revenue trust fund of $65,000. There's basically a new standard that said if you have involvement and how those monies can be spent, it really can't be separately stated in an agency fund. So $65,000 was reclassified from an agency fund over the special revenue trust. No major impact on your funding or any fund operations, since it's, special revenue trust fund doesn't get too much oversight anyways. It said no difficulties in dealing with management. Everyone is very cooperative, cooperative. So we appreciate that. We had no audit adjustments, so obviously, that's a good thing. Kudos to Wendy and her team. No disagreements with management. And once again, the internal control matters that I've already discussed or pointed out in the letter as well. As far as other matters go, we did note that you don't have collateral balances or line of credits to cover some of the balances at the bank, in case the bank failed, that are, you might not be able to recover all of your funds. So we just made a suggestion to work with the bank to see if they'll pledge a line of credit or get you some collateral to cover your balances in case of bank failure. So hopefully, that can happen, and just make sure you're covered in the future. And then cybersecurity, we did have a little write-up there, just because it's such a hot topic. If you have any concerns over that area, definitely feel free to reach out to us and just make sure you got a good plan to make sure nobody's getting into your system and hacking in, especially with the remote environment that some people are living in today. So I guess, yeah, that's a highlight of the audit. I think it went very well for the first year, so I appreciate all that. I guess with that, I'll have, open up to any questions anybody has.
Brian, we did talk about it at our finance committee, so they did discuss it a little bit there, too.
Okay, good.
Ms. Brockard, thank you very much. I think the questions reflects the quality of your work.
Okay. Good to hear. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, the next report is from Dr. Olson, District Administrator.
Just want to check with Chris. Am I better to use the mic and the headphones, or can all of you hear me from the external mic? Just, so I won't get feedback like the last time? Okay, I was just working with Chris, so I didn't get feedback. So first of all, the two gentlemen to my left are up for election. The spring election is set for the first Tuesday in April. December 28th is the deadline for incumbents to file notice of non-candidacy. And then December 1st through January 5th, candidates may file their nomination papers. A quick update from the Lake Mills Rec Department. They have actually been operating extremely well, just like our athletic program. They've had a very robust before and after-school program, as well as Club 55 has been fortunate enough to take advantage of the good weather. They are now planning the fall sports season. Next, we are working on the strategic planning update. I'm working with Joe Schrader to get him the information, as well as we will be sending out a letter inviting participants to be part of that strategic planning committee. And lastly, in-person instruction is expected to resume tomorrow. We are all set. Staff, for the most part, is out of quarantine. Are there any questions?
Okay, well, thank you very much. And again, thank you for all your hard work. This has been a difficult time for, for all, and we truly appreciate the time and energy that you've all had to put in. Moving into community input, do we have anyone who was registered to speak?
No, we don't have anyone registered.
We do not. Okay, then we can move on to the consent agenda. In this evening, that agenda includes the minutes of our regular October 12th meeting, our finance committee proceedings of October 12th, our special board meeting minutes from October 15th and October 26th, the October 28th facilities committee proceedings, November 3rd policy committee proceedings, approval of vouchers and invoices, approval of treasurer's report, approval of the personnel report. And so I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded, is that correct?
Can we get a second?
Well, okay then. Let's have a roll call vote.
Tom Delaney? Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
I think you got us here.
David Radel?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the action items, the approval of the Lake Mills Area School District Safety Plan.
I move the board approve the 2019-20 Lake Mills Area School District Safety Plan and both date in conference information, but will not share with the public.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? As noted, Mr. Vogel discussed this during his previous report this evening. So again, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Tom Delaney? Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of the 2021 summer school dates that Mr. Radel mentioned earlier. So I'd ask for a motion for that approval.
I move the board approve the following 2021 summer school dates as follows. Session one, from June 14th through June 29th, and session two, including swim lessons from July 5th through July 20th.
Second.
Move a second. I'm not always hearing everything, so that's why I asked.
I think I do. Maybe I'm not speaking loud enough. I'm sorry. Second.
Great. Questions or comments on this schedule? Hearing none, I would call the question and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Tom Delaney?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of early graduation requests. We have two additional requests on the agenda this evening, and I would entertain a motion for their approval.
I move the board approve the two early graduation requests as presented.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any questions on these requests or the motion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Tom Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of gifts. And again, we certainly are supported by our community, so I would accept the motion to accept those gifts.
I move the board accept the following gifts, and thank the generous donors for the continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. School supplies and dental hygiene kits to the Lake Mills Elementary School with an estimated value of $100 from Ms. Rachel Davies, 250 disposable face masks valued at $100 from the United Way, a $100 donation to the varsity volleyball team from Edgewood High School, a $170 donation for 4K and 5K class pumpkins from Mark and Pam Cook, and a $500 donation for past due lunch accounts from the London Moravian Church.
Can we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? And again, with our thanks, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Radel?
Aye.
Tom Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is a brief discussion on any future agenda items.
I have two radical, we'll be bringing you the school safety drills for your approval. And then also, we are starting to work on the 2021-22 school calendar. So I'll be working with the admin team on that tomorrow, and then also with the district focus committee later this month.
Okay. So then, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I think that carried. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your week.
Night.